This time I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, November the 26th, 2024. It's 9:00 a.m. and we're in the central jury room of the Ralph H. Walton Jr. Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street in Granbury, Texas. We're very pleased and honored today to have with us Pastor David Samples of the Toller Baptist Church to give us the invocation. Pastor?
Let's pray together. Father, in this week of Thanksgiving, we do celebrate all that you've given to us, all that you've provided, the way that you have cared for us. Lord, thank you. Thank you, Lord. We do pray, Father, continued protection for law enforcement, for fire, for everyone that helps take care of us, Father, as citizens of this great county. Lord, I pray for our commissioners, that you would give them wisdom, that you would give them understanding, that they would see what you see, know what you know, and do what you do. Lord, we love you and we thank you. Bless this meeting today, in Jesus' name. Amen?
Amen.
... is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, the pledge is great, State of Texas. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
All right. Okay. Well, the first item of business today is a special presentation with a proclamation honoring Hood County heroes for their bravery shown during a rescue conducted on November the 10th of 2024. So Brad, who is it? Who's coming down? Who's?
I think Brad was going to come up and kind of go through the events and transpired there, so.
Commissioners, Judge, thank you for having all of us here today. We're just very grateful for the support we get in Hood County, to have the training and the camaraderie between all departments that we have in Hood County. It's not just one fire department in Hood County, it's all of us. Without the help and support from every single fire department in this county, we would not be able to do what we do. And especially the support we get from the commissioners and Hood County for the training and the equipment we have. We have some of the best equipment in the state. With that equipment and that training, a few weeks ago, we were able to save the life of a two-year-old little boy. Without that training and support, we wouldn't have been able to do that. Not only did we have the support from other fire departments, we had an amazing dispatcher that was telling us everything we needed to know. Texas DPS, Granbury Police Department, were first on scene. When I was en route, I knew exactly what I had coming into that fire. When I came around the corner, I saw what was happening. Right behind me was Engine 26 and Engine 1 from Granbury. As soon as I got on scene and accepted command, we immediately had one team deployed to put the fire out and a secondary team to start the rescue of a two-year-old little boy. But without the courage and the excellence that we have in training of our firefighters, those two firefighters would not have been able to perch that secondary window and get that little boy out. And it's a testament to this county and all its firefighters for what we were able to do.
That's... At this time, I'm going to bring up the two firefighters. John, Brian? We have a proclamation here. You do have your reading glasses on, so you can't use that.
Let's do this. We'll turn it around that way.
Judge, you can read it. Okay. All right. Hey. Congratulations. Amen. Good work. Congratulations. Okay. All right. Well, y'all can get one on each side here. This is for y'all. Get one right there. There you go. Right there. Okay. This is an official proclamation to honor the heroes of Hood County Volunteer Fire Departments. Whereas at approximately 12:50 a.m., Sunday, November 10th, Hood County 9/11 received a report of an apartment fire in the 300 block of Parkwood in Granbury, Texas. And whereas upon arrival, the second-story apartment was fully engulfed in flames. And first responders were instructed by dispatchers that a two-year-old child was trapped in the second-floor bedroom. And whereas Granbury PD and Texas DPS arrived quickly on scene and gathered information on the location of the trapped child, which they were able to relay to the arriving fire command quickly, saving precious seconds and expediting the rescue. And whereas Granbury Volunteer Brian Settirelli?
Saratelli.
Saratelli. Good Irish name. Ladder at the bedroom window while North Hood County Volunteer Lieutenant Jonathan Head climbed up and used an axe to shatter the window of the second-story bedroom in search of the distressed toddler. And whereas firefighter Sarah...
Saratelli.
Saratelli. I gotta use your hands just a second. Okay. Firefighter Saratelli followed the sounds of the helpless toddler's desperate cries, found Liam, and carried him to safety and to immediate medical attention provided by Texas EMS. And whereas Granbury firefighter Brian Settirelli, North Hood County Volunteer Lieutenant Jonathan Head, and Granbury Volunteer Fire Department Captain and Incident Commander Brad Snyder worked together at the scene to save the life of a two-year-old Liam Keane. And whereas North Hood County Fire Department's Peyton Smith captured the heroic rescue on video. And whereas other local agencies who assisted in the rescue include Toller Volunteer Fire Department, Indian Harbor Volunteer Fire Department, and Hood County Station 70 Volunteer Fire Department, with all first responders working together seamlessly to ensure the safe rescue of the young child. And whereas Liam's mother, Felicia Keane, said of the bravery shown in rescuing her little boy, quote, "They are amazing heroes. Angels don't get recognized enough. They hit the ground running and they didn't stop." And whereas the community of Granbury and Hood County are extremely proud of our volunteer fire departments, law enforcement agencies, and emergency medical services who work tirelessly to save lives. Now therefore, the Hood County Commissioners Court encourages all Hood County residents to join us in honoring Brian Saratelli, Granbury Volunteer Fire Department Jonathan Head, North Hood County Volunteer Lieutenant Incident Commander Brad Snyder, Granbury Volunteer Fire Department Captain, and Peyton Smith, North Hood County Volunteer Fire Department, for the bravery shown during the rescue conducted in the early morning hours of November the 10th, 2024, and saving the life of little Liam Keane. Signed, this 26th day of November, 2024, by the judge and all the commissioners of Hood County. What a deal. (applause). Liam and his mother, are they here?
Yeah.
Liam, mother. Looky here. How... God, how wonderful. So you...
Is the dad here too?
Yeah, come on up. Is this the guy who was saved?
Yes.
You like these two guys, don't you? Huh? Hey, well, this is wonderful. Well, y'all have a happy Thanksgiving, won't you, sir?
Yes.
Well, good for you. Well, thank you. May God continue to bless both of you. And God bless all of these volunteer fire department guys. They are truly heroes. You're a good man.
Yeah, you're a good buddy.
Yeah, why don't y'all just stand right in front of us? There you go. Yeah, there you go.
Judge, can we get duplicates of these? Can we get duplicates of this?
Yeah. I will have them made. I'll tell you what I'll do. I'll get... What do you want? How many you need?
Just one for each of the guys.
Oh, one for each of the guys?
Yeah. And then mine.
And you keep that one now.
Yeah. And then one. Okay.
Hey, I'll get you one of these made too.
We're going to get duplicates of these, so you got to have them.
See what a caring commander you have up here. Saratelli. Come on, man. Hey, we'll get you some, okay? You know, there's so many TV shows on fire rescue, fire tracker, everything else. We got our own heroes here. Pretty good. There's a good article in the paper too about it. Front page news. Did a good job.
That was on the BBC. This video went worldwide. They were showing this in Europe and stuff. That's absolutely amazing.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is service awards. And the first item up is Terry DeVoe.
Yes, sir. The first two service awards, neither one are here today. They both had previous appointments, so I'll ask them if they're interested in being here in December. The last one is out this week, and so she will be here in December.
Okay.
So we only have the one this morning.
We got... Well, we have Sean McGuire here. He told me he's 10 years, but in dog years, he's 105 years old because of the job that he had. Is that about right, Sean? Sheriff, you agree with that, don't you?
Oh, yeah.
Hey, come on up, Sean.
This guy has done so much for our department and dispatch, leading them and getting the radio system up and running and doing so much for the fire departments too, to help get them on board with everything, that he's a great asset to the department. And his whole family is behind him, and I guess they're all here today, so that's good.
Are these all members of your department here? Or your family?
Family.
Well, come on up and get your picture taken with him. He's kind of a hero to me, I'll tell you what, and really revamping this. (applause).
Picture time.
Picture time.
Picture time. Great job.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yeah. He does a lot. He does a lot, I tell you.
He goes way above and beyond the call of duty. Every day, he's at the office. And even when he's not at the office, he's working and...
Yes.
He's always taking care of business.
We're not done yet, though. You got five more years. Five more years of dealing with me.
Oh, five more years? No, no. I thought 15 more years. Don't y'all think? You don't want him at home, do you? Thank you.
I think they're ready to leave home, except for the wife. But I'm not ready for him to go, that's for sure.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Sean, really. Okay, and Linda Mellon is not here, is she?
No, sir. She'll be here in December.
Okay. Good. All right. We don't have any citizens' comments at large, do we? All right. So then the first item on the miscellaneous business to be discussed, and we're going to really... We just got so many important people here today. I mean, look at the firefighters and Sean, and now we've got two distinguished members from citizens, officials from Johnson County here to speak on item number one, which is discuss and take appropriate action to approve the resolution requesting regulation of PFAS and other harmful chemicals and biosolids fertilizers known as forever chemicals. And we have here Mr. Larry Woolley, who is known now internationally. He's a commissioner from Johnson County, but he's known internationally, and he's on the target list of DuPont and 3M and a few other people. And with him is Detective Dana Ames, who is a constable also in Johnson County, who worked to expose this very serious problem. I have seen their presentation on video now twice or three times, and it's excellent. So why don't both of y'all come up here and tell us a little bit about this? Y'all both signed up to speak, and we were going to let y'all speak anyway, but we'll do it here. But go ahead.
Well, good morning, commissioners and judge. Thank you for having us here today. Thank you for the action that you're taking, the very important action that you're taking to protect the citizens in your county. As you are aware, we had a major contamination in Johnson County from the use of contaminated biosolids. The biosolids were contaminated with the PFOS chemicals. Prior to this case, we had no knowledge of what PFOS was. And if there's anyone in the court that is not aware of what that is, they are man-made chemicals. They are known cancer causers. They are the most well-studied chemicals in our history. There are direct links to kidney cancer, liver cancer, testicular cancer, and many other cancers from exposure to PFOS chemicals. When this case occurred in our county, and I don't want to speak too much because Commissioner Woolley has done so much work on this, and I know he has a lot to say about this as well, but when this contamination originally occurred in our county, what we seen was sick people, dying cattle, dying fish, dying pets, dying horses, dying birds, you name it. And this was innocently done. The farmer that used this particular product as fertilizer was lied to. He was told that it was safe, that it was organic, that it was a good thing to do. And what wasn't told to him, that these companies are not telling people about, is that they are contaminated because you can't separate the chemicals out of it because this is waste, human waste, from municipal waste treatment plants that's rendered down into a fertilizer. So you can't get a lot of this stuff, it's like, I'm going to say it, it's from the toilet to the table. So whenever you are processing the municipal waste, they cannot extrapolate those chemicals out of the product, and it got put down on the ground. And so we've had a disaster, and many others have as well, and may not be fully aware that that's what they're suffering. But anyways, thank you so much for this very important action, and I'll let Commissioner Woolley speak.
Commissioner Woolley, like I said, y'all have done such a big exposé. This has been WFAA's segment on this topic is the top view of anything that they've ever done before with, what's her name? Rebecca Lopez?
Rebecca Lopez.
Rebecca Lopez. I mean, y'all have done an eye-opening deal, so y'all have done a great job. We should be giving y'all a medal too. In fact, we'll make one up here. We're good here in Hood County at making up medals here, so.
This is our medal right here. This resolution that you have prepared. And again, Judge, commissioners, thank you for having us this morning. I'm Larry Woolley, County Commissioner from Johnson County. This, you know, this issue is, it's been going on in our counties for years and years. The land application of biosolids until probably a year, year and a half ago, I'd never heard the term PFAS or PFOS, PFOA, any of those terms. I'm a lifelong agriculturalist, farmer and rancher. I have an ag degree. I was an ag teacher. And this was all Greek and new to us, you know, a year, year and a half ago. And through the help, I mean, Detective Ames has been boots on the ground and been the sole investigator on this issue that's turned into not only a civil, some civil cases as well as criminal investigation. This, and yes, Rebecca Lopez has been a huge advocate and an asset as far as getting the word out. And yes, that video was the all-time leading in terms of view numbers. This, you know, the thing that, what we've tried to do is educate commissioners and judges across the state. I presented at several conferences. Detective Ames and I presented at the North and East Region. I presented at the Panhandle Conference, and then we've been to several of these one-day agri-life extension conferences. Have two more next week. Our mission is to try to educate, and I appreciate the fact that all five of you court members were present at the District 8 Conference in Stephenville a couple of weeks ago. What it takes is education, because like I said, a year and a half ago, we didn't know what this was. And so our mission is to educate as many county commissioners across the state as we can, so that we can communicate and impact communication with our state-elected leaders. We've talked to state representatives, state senators. Dana and I have met personally with Commissioner Sid Miller, Commissioner of Agriculture, and we've met with, had conversation with TCEQ officials. And, you know, everybody just kind of steps back, so it's going to take legislative impact. We've got some victims over here that have started out with about 150 head of cattle. Last death count I heard was right at 30. Five horses, a number of dogs, like, I mean, the list, the numbers are growing continually, and they're faced with some decisions on what are they, you know, how are they going to proceed? How are they going to move forward from this? They can't drink the water out of their well. They can't eat the vegetables. They quit growing a garden. They can't eat the beef that they're raising. The fish are contaminated with super-high levels. And this is just the one place where we did the testing. We were the only, we were the first and only, as of now, the only county in this whole state of Texas that's ever done any diagnostic testing. So there's so much unknown as to what other contamination issues that we have out there. So we have to have a legislative impact. Our new state representative, Helen Kerwin, is working diligently on this. Her daughter has just been nominated by President-elect Trump as the Secretary of Agriculture. So Brooke...
Brooke Rollins.
Brooke Rollins, thank you. So we're hoping that, and we talked to Helen this morning on the way over here, and she shared a little bit of humor with us. She left a beige rose on Brooke's desk and put a note on there, "This rose was grown in PFOS-contaminated soil." So in other words, we need help here in the state of Texas, and it's not just...
Is there a lawsuit filed pending for this family that...
Yes, they are involved in litigation against the company Centagro. We, as Johnson County, are in a lawsuit, are involved in litigation against the EPA for failure to regulate these PFAS chemicals. So there's, and there's possibly future litigation, you know, coming. And we've invited other counties to join in that litigation against the EPA. As far as these resolutions go, when you adopt this this morning, you will be a growing list, and I'm going to read you this list of counties that have adopted a similar. Of course, Johnson County has Ellis County, Henderson County, Kaufman County, Wise County, Somerville, and now Hood County will become the seventh county that we know of that have adopted a similar resolution. Now, you know, and this shows solidarity and unity among our counties and asking the state, we need some help. We need some assistance. We need some regulation. You know, there's an ancient proverb that says, "If you want to go fast, go alone; but if you want to go far, go together." And I appreciate the fact that you're joining in together with us in this mission. Thank you very, very much.
Well, thank you very much for bringing us to our attention a couple of weeks ago down in Stephenville, and this is what prompted us to do that. I can't believe that there's other farms that have, because a lot of these forever chemicals have been distributed in solid form to a lot of other farms, haven't they, for a while?
For years and years.
It was just unknown. It was unknown until our investigation, until our case. And now it's just, we have people calling us from all over the state of Texas that are suffering the same fate that our victims have suffered. Their animals are dying. They've made the correlation between the two, finding out how they can test. We're instructing them on how to go about getting that. We have the forensic evidence. As some would say, we have the receipts. And so what we have, we have scientifically proven, and it is happening in other counties.
I predict it's going to be like the tobacco industry deal.
Yes, sir.
I think it's, because it's just too, it's that big. It's too many people that's been affected. Well, thank you very much for your work. I know the state of Texas thanks all of y'all, both of y'all. That's done excellent work. Let's get these two people ready. Thank you very much. Okay. We all know about this. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution requesting regulation of the PFAS and other harmful chemicals and biosolid fertilizers.
Second?
A motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the resolution requesting regulation of the PFOS and other harmful chemicals in biosolid fertilizers, seconded by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion?
Yes, Judge, I've got a couple of things. Thank you, Commissioner, for coming in here, and thank you for your work on this. And as we discussed before this meeting, we are being, we are in the midst of an onslaught. We've got the solar panel people coming in and taking acres and acres and hundreds and thousands of acres with solar panels that are full of all kinds of chemicals that, to this point, science doesn't really know what effect it's going to have on us. We got the Bitcoin mining that is, as far as, you know, I don't even know what that's, why that's here, what they plan to do with that. What's happening to y'all in Johnson County and other counties, and as we discussed, what we don't, what we don't know is the stuff that's going in our drinking water. The EPA does not require any testing of drinking water for pharmaceuticals. And pharmaceuticals go right through us and right into the water. And there's also a lot more and more evidence coming up about what that's doing to us and the fish and the cattle and the agriculture. So this is very important.
happening to y'all in Johnson County and other counties? And as we discussed, what we don't, what we don't know is the stuff that's going in our drinking water. The EPA does not require any testing of drinking water for pharmaceuticals. And pharmaceuticals go right through us and right into the water. And there's also a lot more and more evidence coming up about what that's doing to us and the fish and the cattle and the agriculture. So this is very important. And I hope that every county in Texas will sign up on this because some say these resolutions are just a piece of paper. But they do, if enough of us do a resolution in this regard, they will listen to us. So thank you.
Any further comment? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank y'all once again. We look forward to working with you. All right. Item number two, discuss and take appropriate action to approve the amended ARPA grant agreement between Hood County and Pecan Volunteer Fire Department and EMS, Inc. and return the allocated ARPA funds.
Thank you, Judge. This is a revised agreement with the correction on the name and also reduction. There was some, some funds were spent. And so this, when the funds are returned, it will be less than $7,530 that were spent to, for the initial planning and design of the addition to the fire station in Pecan. And then the dates are in the future for reporting. And I think that's, that's it. So with, were there any speakers? No speakers?
No speaker.
All right. With that, I'll make the motion to approve the amended ARPA grant agreement between Hood County and Pecan VFD EMS, Inc. and return the allocated funds, the allocated ARPA funds to Pecan VFD EMS, Inc.
Second. Okay, motion been made by Commissioner Samuelson to approve the ARPA grant agreement between Hood County and Pecan Volunteer Fire Department and EMS and return the allocated ARPA funds, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Okay. Item number three, discuss and take appropriate action to approve the opt-in document for the Kroger opioid settlement as prescribed by the Texas Attorney General.
Judge, this came to us, there's been, our Attorney General in Texas has been in lawsuits against many of the opioid manufacturers, distributors, and this is one, another one, which is Kroger. So he asked each of the counties and other municipalities to opt in so that we, once the settlement is done, we will be able to have funds returned to the counties for the opioid epidemic. So with that, I'm-
No speakers on this one. So you want to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the opt-in document for the Kroger opioid settlement as prescribed by the Texas Attorney General.
A motion was made by Commissioner Samuelson to approve the opt-in document for the Kroger opioid settlement as prescribed by the Texas Attorney General, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion again carries unanimously, five zero. Item number four, review quotes and take appropriate action to approve the purchase of a truck with light package for Constable Precinct 2 to replace the 2009 Ford truck with 165,000 miles. Cost not to exceed $48,000 from Capital Fund 55 or from Fund 104, HCAD refund is determined by the court and the county auditor. We do have one speaker on this. On, we never did decide if we want to have the sponsor of the bill speak first or the people speak first. We still don't. I guess I'll ask the speaker, would you like to speak first or would you want to hear from the officials, Ms. Brown?
I'm here for the official.
Okay. Well, I guess you're coming up here and speak, Constable.
Good morning, Commissioners and constituents. Your county law enforcement team is about to be called upon to assist President Trump and borders our home and undertake the largest deportation effort in our nation's history. The Precinct 2 Constable's office under my leadership has never been satisfied with doing the bare minimum and has led the field locally in forging a true bond of service between the people and our office. Our citizens have made clear in re-electing President Trump that our nation's law enforcement is about to be called upon to go above and beyond anything we've been asked to do previously. And I stand here today asking you to provide a needed piece of equipment to be ready to answer President Trump's call to action. The 2024 Chevy truck I drive now has approximately 30,000 miles and is only 5,000 miles from being out of warranty. The backup vehicle currently used by my reserve deputies is a 2017 Chevrolet with approximately 75,000 miles on it. That vehicle, along with several others purchased by other Constable offices, has had recurring electrical issues since I became Constable in 2018, rendering it at times completely without emergency equipment, even though thousands of dollars have been spent attempting to diagnose and fix the issue. Along the way, around $1,000 in vehicle batteries have been purchased to keep it operational. Thanks to Deputy Jensen and his Kentucky windage, and about so many things, he has patched it together and got the light siren and radio working again, although the persistent battery drain issue has not been resolved. That leaves the tertiary vehicle, that's a 2009 Ford pickup that has more than 160,000 miles on it, that was gifted to us before being junked by another office. To be honest, this vehicle is only marginally acceptable for use of any kind by law enforcement and will be retired as soon as the engine dies, which will be soon, or we receive this replacement. I fully understand tight budgets and competing needs in the county. I humbly ask you to consider the kind of social, political, and law enforcement environment our nation is about to face and ask you to please equip my men and I to be able to answer the call President Trump has given. Thank you and please don't defund my office.
Ms. Brown?
Good morning. On May 14th, I stood right here and asked what this position was going to cost the county. I was told nothing. This position of Willie Jensen as the third Reserve Deputy for Precinct 2, I was told nothing. It was part of his current budget and there would be no additional cost. Nanette put on her, on social media that this was part of his budget request. But I couldn't find that in, in any documentation. I, he came before the court on June 20th and he asked for an increase of 16% for his admin assistant, but nothing about a vehicle. How many vehicles, I didn't really understand, how many vehicles does he have now?
Three.
Three? He has three vehicles?
There's three vehicles. Two of them are, yeah.
So was one of these vehicles the one you were driving around town and showing up at polling places?
Absolutely.
So.
I fixed and made the lights work on.
So.
But I need to be answering the court, not be pulling at you.
Well, that's fine. I just had some questions. It's still, do we need, is there a return of investment on this? Do we really need three? He is the lowest performing, maybe not performing, but the lowest Constable in this county. Serves the lowest number of papers. I don't know if that's because they just don't come to his department, but still, do we need this?
That's absolutely not true. The papers are still-
Order, order.
Yeah. Hang on just a second. I think we can give you a chance to speak. Go ahead and sit down and let her-
Benson, you can answer the question after she gets through.
Every department delivers, serves many, many more papers than Constable Precinct 2. So I don't understand why we need this. And why, did you say, why did you say this was coming out of a budget request?
Do you want to pull his spreadsheet of his budget request? There's a vehicle request on there.
His what?
If you would like to do an open records request and ask for his budget spreadsheet, you'll see it.
Okay. Well, it was not asked for in open court.
We all get, receive the spreadsheets from each department with their budget requests.
But when he came up here and asked for what he wanted in his budget request, he didn't mention a new vehicle. And the month before, you said this appointment wasn't going to cost the county anything. But now it's going to because now we need another vehicle or a better vehicle. And why, I mean, I love that it's half the price of the one you brought to the court a month ago. But I don't underst, I still think this is a problem with county funds.
This was put into the capital request, right? That's, it's a separate thing than, particular to his department request. You requested the capital separately. So I believe that that was part of the request.
Was it in open court?
Yeah. I mean, it was, it was during capital, am I correct on this? That I know I've been hearing about this, but was this presented as part of the capital request?
I think he submitted it with his budget request, but I don't know, I don't recall if we talked about it in open court or if it got translated over to the capital side.
Yeah.
I know he did talk about it, but he submitted his initial budget request.
Yeah.
He has pretty much the same budget as every other Constable and he does teeny tiny bit of work that they do.
I don't know if it's that easy to quantify, things like, you know, I know that different offices do different things, different touches of paper or whatever. I don't know how easy it is to quantify that stuff. And to provide, to provide the basic needs, now, you're right, he has three vehicles. One of them is a long history of repairs and problems going on with that. And I don't remember how many miles. You said 165,000 or something on that one. And then the one that they've got now keeps draining batteries. They keep pouring money into that one. Even though it's newer, it's still problematic. There's something going on there that nobody can seem to trace down and figure out how to, like I said, they keep buying batteries for it because it keeps killing the batteries. It's got an electrical issue. And a lot of times, those kind of gremlins get in there and just destroy things. So-
Sometimes we just get lemons. Who is the mechanic that can't trace down the problem?
I don't know. You'd have to ask them. I'm not sure who, you know.
I'm just, I just, I came here in May and asked if this was, how much this was going to cost the county. And in June, you decided that we'd put this on the agenda and, you know, because in June, he asked for a new truck. I mean, you say one thing one month and then the next month?
It wasn't in June. That was last month. Last month was October.
In June, when he turned in his-
Oh, yes. He turned in his, he turned in his capital request, yes. In June, well, May, June is when he turned in his-
It was June 20th that he came before the court and he didn't ask for that then. So-
It was part of his capital request. We didn't talk about all the capital requests.
Well, how are you going to be transparent if you don't talk about all of it?
Time is up.
We did talk about the capital request during the Capitol hearing.
Benson, does the Constable's office want to say anything else?
No, Mr. Gordon, any questions, Judge?
Good. Y'all want to make a motion?
Yes.
First off.
Price quotes that we have, you know, I have real concern with the source based on their public history. And I got a real issue with that.
Why? What do you mean, public history?
The fact that this, you know, this Constable's office, as was already previously stated, does not have the volume. Now, what's the plans with, you know, do you need three, three veh, four vehicles now for three officers? They're not, somebody in it all the time. The one that he's looking to replace, the 2009, you know, ever since he was appointed as a reserve Constable, he's been driving it. So what's the problem? If it's got a transmission problem, which is what I've been told, your transmission's five, maybe $6,000. Driving a 165,000 mile vehicle is not, should not be an issue, you know, for that.
Well, you can put a transmission in it and then something, you know how it goes. You know that these things just keep going on and on. Why don't we fix the lights? We can send it over to Dana and they can charge $15,000.
I want to be sure that our law enforcement officers, whether they're paid or whether they're working on behalf of the county, are safe in the vehicles that they drive.
That's what it's all about, having two functional vehicles.
Where's this truck now? The 2009, where's it at?
Over at the other deputy's house.
Commissioner Wilson, that truck can hardly go 80 miles an hour. The windshield wipers don't work. There is oil in the transmission fluid. We've been told that it is in the process of dying and cannot be resurrected and will be retired as soon as we get a replacement. Thank you.
The safety of the law enforcement officers is important. So I don't want to have a law enforcement officer that's doing his job get stranded on the side of the road because their vehicle is not working. So with that, I'll make the motion.
Got one more comment. If it was put in as his budget request, why are we taking it out of 55?
Well, that's what-
No, I'm-
That's where we-
That's what all the sheriffs, all the $842,000 for the sheriff trucks, those were also put in his budget requests that were put, taken out of Fund 55. I have an option here. If we don't want to use Fund 55, it's $48,000, which, thank you for finding a vehicle that suits your needs, which is a smaller truck, less equipment for, that you need, still a safe vehicle that will, that is, with equipment is $48,000. Well, actually less. It's about $46,700.
Yeah, even if we were to go the extra mile, put a cage in it, put the radio we have in it and a camera system, and even if we were to ask for bulletproof glass, Lord forbid that we should be behind that, we'd still be well under $100,000.
Okay.
I appreciate the fact that you've thought outside the box a little bit and said, hey, there may be another avenue here that we can look into. Buying a different vehicle, heck, it's going to be smaller and save fuel in the long run. I mean, there, I appreciate the fact that you're willing to look outside the norm for something that fits your needs here. I'm, you've got to have the equipment that you need to do your job. And you've got two vehicles that are failing, you know, routinely. Is there some point where, yeah, $15,000 to get all new lights and everything put on it and get it, get it up and running is, for, for the emergency stuff? Do we know that that's going to fix the problem? There are some variables in there. And I think maybe this is something that perhaps we can use in another place in the county if need be, or, you know, something that we can do that way. I feel the need to make sure you guys have the equipment to do the job that you need to do, much the same as the sheriff's office. They, we've got to give them the equipment to do the job. So-
We think there's, we think there's a better way to save thousands of dollars. I mean, just the fuel alone over, over a year is going to save thousands of dollars, not mentioning the price.
Yeah. I appreciate you.
Well, I got something to say. Sheriff, how many vehicles do you need right now? Did you get all the vehicles that you asked for?
Yes, as of the last court, we've got, there's six more.
So, so you've got all your vehicles here?
That was at 842,000 that we approved last court.
Let me ask you this. There's no question that the sheriff's deputies use more, put more mileage on their vehicles than the Constables in one precinct do. Is it possible that if we get this new vehicle, Sheriff, that you could get one of the older vehicles and get, you get the new vehicle and give an older vehicle to Constable Precinct 2? Is that possible? What are, what is the oldest vehicle you have in your fleet right now that, that patrolman- What are, what is the oldest vehicle you have in your fleet right now that, that patrolman use to patrol the streets?
If I may say something, I've worked with Denise off and on during.
Sheriff, answer my question first, please.
I don't remember what the oldest one in the fleet is that's still being used in patrol. We've got six ready to go, get set up in Fort Worth. We haven't heard from them on what date that's going to be, so I don't have anything to hand over to them right now, but possibly after we get those other six here and get them set up, then yeah, I should have something. I don't know when that might be, probably not for a year, year and a half out, so. So he needs something now, he doesn't need to wait for a year and a half, so.
Thank you, and that's, that's pretty much what Denise Sergeant Lysin told me is that she has this, she's still waiting on the ones we ordered last year to be outfitted.
Yes.
And then we ordered the six last week, which won't be here for a year, so she didn't have anything. In fact, she's short one vehicle.
I'm trying to point out is that the sheriff's department, the patrol, use their vehicles a lot more than what the constable, a reserve constable would use their vehicle. So if there's a new vehicle coming in, I'd rather for the new vehicle to go to the sheriff's department and then the older vehicle go to the constable's office. Doesn't that make total sense? Isn't that the best use of the citizens' money for vehicles? The sheriffs have to patrol the entire county, not one precinct. And it's working, the vehicle is working 24 hours a day.
I don't think it's fair to try to pit them against each other like that. That's.
I agree with you 100% Commissioner.
I don't, I don't, I think we need to look at each one of these departments individually. They have a need, I think that there's some political connotations going on here that don't belong here.
I agree 100% with that too.
And we either honor that request to the particular department or we don't. I don't think that we need to bring politics into this. Let's give them the equipment to function at their job.
I mean, we support all law enforcement, correct Judge? All law enforcement. So I did do one other thing. I did check with our TIPS account to see if we could get a vehicle, a similar vehicle at a cheaper rate through buy board. And it, it wasn't, it was $3,500 more. So looks like these, this is the lowest bid. So with that, I will make the motion to approve the purchase of a truck with light package for Constable Precinct Two to replace a 2009 Ford truck with 165,000 miles. Cost not to exceed 48,000 from, do you want to capital or HCAD refund?
Yeah, motion made by Commissioner Samuelson to approve the purchase of a truck with a light package for Constable Precinct Two to replace the 2009 Ford truck with 165,000 miles. Cost not to exceed $48,000 from either capital fund 55 or from Fund 104.
I'll second that and let's take it out of 55.
That's all right, okay. Fund 55, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I got one more thing to add. I like the judge's comment about considering bringing this particular style of vehicle over to the sheriff's department. I think that's a great idea in the future. Instead of $100,000 Tahos, maybe a $50,000 lighter unit might be in order. So thank you Judge for bringing that up. I appreciate your suggestion in that. And go ahead and forward the motion now.
Any other comment? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Aye.
Nay. Motion approved, three to two. Okay, item number five, consider and take appropriate action to approve the TCDRS plan and authorize the county judge to sign the TCDRS plan agreement for calendar year 2025. Ms. Melissa Welborn.
Good morning. I submitted the current plan and also a plan for 2025. You can see that there is no change between the current year and 2025. If you approve the plan as is, it stays the same. We won't even have to have the judge sign it, it just rolls over into 2025. I visited with the auditor, she said y'all actually approved a little bit more than what our current plan is paying, so there would be no increase to the current budget.
Okay, good, I hear a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we authorize county judge to sign the TCDRS plan agreement for calendar year 2025.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Andrews to allow the county judge to sign the TCDRS plan. Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Thank you, Ms. Welborn. Item number six, discuss and take appropriate action to release the Texas EMS subsidy funds allocated during the 2024-25 budget process. Hood County Commissioners Court budgeted $450,000 to partially subsidize Texas EMS pending the outcome of the hospital district VATRE election. With the ballot measure failing, the county funds will now be released from Fund 101-5441-58900. You need to, nobody sign up for any discussion, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make the motion to approve the release of the Texas EMS subsidy funds allocated during the 2024-25 budget process for $450,000 from the fund as stated there.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Andrews to release the Texas EMS subsidy funds allocated during the 2024 budget process in amount of $450,000 to partially subsidize Texas EMS. Second by Commissioner Samuelson. Are you looking pretty happy up there? Let me just take the vote first and see if it does. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Pass this unanimously, although, yeah, I know you don't need this, to run this on a shoestring. You've been doing a great job so far. I hope this carries you through or helps a lot, buddy.
It will. I just want to say thank you to the court and to the judge for, for the support. I met individually, we met in group. You understand the expenses to run this county is, it's exceeding the revenue. It's growing, costs are exceeding the ability to continue without some type of assistance, so. I wish the tax had passed, it would have been a better opportunity, I think, for the citizens, but I appreciate the court taking consideration to help subsidize as well.
Maybe the legislature is going to approve that measure to help all the rural counties with ambulance service.
So I was actually placed on that group to help with that too.
Good.
And they're working on it. It will mimic Senate Bill 22, basically. Same population, same equipment, same funding for the, for the personnel, but I'm not sure the dollar amount. We've already met with the governor, the governor's office is very supportive of it, so we just got to see how it's going to carry forth with all the other things legislature's got to address.
Good, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Doing a great job, thank you. Okay, Drew has told me that he has pulled in seven and eight. So that brings us to item number nine. Again, discuss and take appropriate action to approve the county judge to sign the Tyler Technologies amendments to separate the Executime software from the other Tyler products that are used by the Hood County. This is the next step in returning funds from Hood County for the Executime product that was unable to be installed successfully.
Thank you Judge, this is, as you know, this has been a, a long journey to get the funds returned to the county. And we are at the point where what Tyler is doing is they're issuing amendments. This is the first one, there will be another one, which is removing the software legally from our contract. And this is one of the components, there'll be another component, I hope, on the next agenda to remove the rest of it. And then once the, both of those amendments are signed, which removes the software from our account, then they will, will go into the process of the refunds. So with that, I'll make the motion to approve the county judge to sign the Tyler Technologies amendment to separate Executime software from the Tyler products that are used by Hood County. This is the next step in returning the funds to Hood County for the Executime product that was unable to be installed successfully.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Samuelson to approve the county judge to sign the Tyler Technologies amendment to separate Executime software from the other Tyler products, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Item number 10, discuss and take appropriate action to award remaining ARPA funds to Tyler Volunteer Fire Department to assist with installation of asphalt parking lot at their newly constructed Station 91 at 7715 Paloxi Highway.
Yeah Judge, with the, with us changing direction on the generator grant, there, you know, put that money back in place, there's about $23,000 left in ARPA funds. Tolar VFD reached out and asked if we would be willing to assist them. They've got a parking lot project at about $35,000 is the estimation on that. And they realize that it won't, that the, the remaining ARPA funds will not be able to complete that project, but they were asking for the assistance. They did not get any of the, the ARPA funds for any buildings or anything like that, but they have recently constructed a brand new building with, with donations and out of their own funds. And they were just asking for a little bit of help to get that parking lot. They said if they can get the parking lot paid for, then they can get a well drilled and start producing some water down there, so.
So this is basically a pass-through grant?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
So, yeah, they just, I just asked him for a, an estimate on the parking lot to show that, you know, that's, that's where the money's intending to go. And it's significantly more than, than the amount they're requesting.
What is the amount that you're asking?
It's 23,000.
Making a motion?
Yes sir, I'll make a motion for 23,000.
Made by Commissioner Samuelson.
Andrews.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Andrews, to award the remaining ARPA funds the amount of $23,000 to the Tolar Volunteer Fire Department to assist with the installation of the asphalt parking lot at the Station 91, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Item number 11, we're going to keep until the end because that goes into executive session. Item number 12, fire marshal to present an update on the KBDI index and fire weather conditions. Consider and take appropriate action if burn is required.
Come up and bring the rain, huh? It's usually, this is like a rain dance, I think it's usually pretty effective, so.
Right, well, so I just got the update for today. There's no change from yesterday, so the KBDI did not go up or down. Right now, our average is 484. I'm not recommending a burn ban at this time, but considering I only get every other week to get in front of y'all, I wanted to come and give you an update and put this on the agenda before we had all the rain and everything else. So right now, the weather's kind of cooperating at a 484. We're, I think we're still doing okay. So I do not recommend a burn ban at this time. And if that changes, I'll come back again.
So have you said 580 is about where your tipping point is?
So usually when, when we get it about 550 as an average on the KBDI, then I really start paying attention. And when we start having just random starts, just not explain, like power lines or roadside starts from chains dragging and that kind of stuff, that's, that's when I really start looking at doing it. 575 is usually the trigger where I'm going to come ask.
A lot of times, you'll have that vegetation that grows and it dies off right now, and that dang broom weed on top of the ground is still extraordinarily volatile, so.
Right.
Still be careful with this, but.
Well, and that, so that KBDI, just so everybody understands, it's a, it's a measure of the amount of moisture in the ground. So the KBDI goes from 0 to 800 is the entire scale. Effectively, what that translates into is at a KBDI 100, it's the top inch of topsoil that has no moisture. At a 200, it's two inches and so on. So what that KBDI measures is basically the amount of moisture in the ground. It's not necessarily the, the thing that's going to tell you how much moisture is in the vegetation. But with having that moisture in the ground, the chances of having moisture in the vegetation is higher. So really, when we get to that 550, 575, that means the top five inches of topsoil is dry. And it, I've been pretty lucky, the last couple of times I've asked for a burn ban, we'll, we'll drop like 100, 200 points from the rain that it produces, so. I don't know if there's any direct correlation, but.
Burn ban's still in effect that we passed at the last Commissioners Court. So you're saying terminate the burn ban at this time?
I don't recall there being a burn ban passed in the last court. I think Mike came in and gave an update, but we didn't recommend one. Yeah, no, so we were teetering right on that point and I had Mike come in and give the update, so.
Rained the day before.
Right.
And.
Stay tuned till next time.
I just see you went here the last time.
Correct.
Okay.
I was in Missouri hunting.
Okay, all right, that's fine, so we don't need to do anything this time?
Yes sir.
Thank you.
Yes sir, thank you.
All right, item number 13, discuss and take appropriate action to approve travel arrangements conforming to the previous travel policy but not following the current policy that was recently changed.
Yeah.
Fine with this, Ms. Welborn?
I think it's maybe something with the audit.
Yeah, I think, I think what happened here is they, they kind of followed the previous policy that we had played. This constable for, they had a trip booked and they did not, they told me that they didn't realize that that policy had changed in that way. And they kind of booked this according to the previous policy or, you know. So whenever the new guidelines came in, it's specific where you have to go for, they use a third-party booking agent or whatever, and it's specifically where we go now. Anyway, it ended up, I think it cost us about $84 more. $82.51, so it cost us. So, yeah, it did, it did cost us a little bit extra, but, you know, they kind of asked for a mulligan on this and go ahead and approve it and they'll get that straightened out and get with the policy in the future.
What are you asking for?
To go ahead and approve it because it's outside of our policy.
To approve what?
To approve the extra $82.51 that they spent, to, to approve the booking that they did, even though it was outside of the policy. Let them go ahead and take that out of their travel budget and, you know, make sure that they follow the policy in the future.
All right, make your motion, Mr. Commissioner.
That was, I'm moved that we allow the expenditure, the additional expenditure of the booking, the travel, that was a little bit outside of the policy.
Second. You got that motion, you know what it is on the thing, okay. Second, made by Commissioner Andrews, second by Commissioner Wilson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries five zero. Item number 14, discuss and take appropriate action to approve travel book following previous travel guidelines but outside current policy. Is that the same thing?
Oh. Yeah, that's the same, sorry, that's the same item.
Are you pulling 14?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll pull 14. I didn't even.
We need to make another motion or that?
No, I just.
You understand, you got to correct it, okay. All right, item number 15, discuss and take appropriate action to accept the award of Public Safety Office Bullet Resistance Shield reimbursement grant and authorize a purchase of nine bullet-resistant shields for $75,845 from Fund 55. Sheriff's Office, Auditor.
Purchasing, everybody come up.
Purchasing agent. County judge, yeah, go ahead.
All right, so recently, I have acquired the grant writing position under my purview. And in doing that, we will need to set out a new process because there was a little bit of confusion regarding the normal sequence of events in applying for a grant, the grant being accepted, how we allow the payment to transfer. So this is why you're seeing this on the court again, and I would like to, I still need time to work through all the processes as this is a new arm in my department. So the reason this is on here is because there will be a transfer of funds, and that was not designated when we, when the court decided to. was not designated when we, when the court decided to pursue this grant initially. So, what we need today is to discuss where the funds are coming from, and then you guys allowing that transfer to take place, and then all the process behind the scenes of where we're going to actually be attaining these pieces of equipment. So, my piece of this is there will be a funds transfer. I need the court to allow it and determine where that's coming from.
Funds transferred, you mean payment?
Payments, yes. Things going in and out.
And this is a 100% reimbursable grant, right?
Correct. So, when we initially applied for it, we applied for $200,000. I'm just using round numbers. The grant then was amended to, you know, there's a big pot of money, and they disperse it between more than just one county, and so our piece of that pie was brought down to the 75, 845, and then we will then purchase whatever items within that dollar amount. So, we will front the money, and then we will be reimbursed for that money, so.
Is that the same thing with the next one on 16, on the rifle-resistant body armor?
Correct.
It's a same explanation here.
Same process.
Same process from both of them. So, do I hear a motion to approve?
Well, there's more to it, though. Hold on.
Okay, good morning, Judge Commissioners. So, to move forward with the purchase in number 15, the court needs to approve a discretionary sole-source exemption for the company called Ardvarc because they're not on a cooperative contract. Ardvarc has provided a sole-source letter stating that there's nothing comparable on the market to their product due to their proprietary and/or patented technologies and a combination of materials not available in any other product. So, to continue with the purchase, we would need that discretionary sole-source exemption approved by.
I'm still, we're still building out the processes, so we'll have to loop in, in the interim, because when we're applying for these grants, we have to have a quote to go by to know what dollar amount they're asking, and so the whole process is going to have to be changed, in my view, and I'll share that with you. I plan to share in next court what my ideas and what you guys envision and all of that, so it's going to, it's a working progress.
We still need to approve these right now, did meet that. So, I dare hear, do I hear a motion?
With the sole source.
I will make a motion that we accept the award of the Public Safety Office Bullet Resistance Shield Reimbursement Grant and authorize a purchase of nine bullet-resistant shields for $75,845 from Fund 55 with the connotation that the, it says a sole-source purchase because of the proprietary data of the material that are in the product.
Wilson, Commissioner Wilson made a motion to accept the award of the Public Safety Bullet Resistance Reimbursement Grant, the purchase of the bullet-resistant shields of $75,845, the limitation that the source is a sole source. Can't have any competitive bids, really, on things. Seconded by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. It's number 16, is the same thing then? We've discussed that. Do I hear a motion?
As I move that we accept the award of the Public Safety Officer, Office Rifle Resistant Body Armor Reimbursement Grant and authorize a purchase of five carriers and 16 plates for $16,422 from Fund 55.
Second.
Made by Commissioner Wilson to accept the award of the Public Safety Office Rifle Resistant Body Armor Reimbursement Grant and authorize a purchase of five carriers and 16 plates for $16,422 from Fund 55, seconded by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Item number 17 is pulled, am I right? Okay, and 18 is again an executive session that we will take at the end of the Commissioners' Court. So, the consent agenda, does any Commissioner wish to pull anything or question anything on the consent agenda? If not, do I hear a motion?
Motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Yeah, motion made by Commissioner Samuelson to accept the consent agenda as stated, seconded by, anybody want to second it?
I seconded.
Oh, you seconded? I didn't hear you. Seconded by Commissioner Wilson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Okay, I'll do that, all right. Okay, this brings, there's no road ops, it brings us to Development. Mr. Clint Head. Yes, sir.
Morning Judge, morning Commissioners. Development's accepted an application for a replat for Decord Over Hills Phase 2 lots 78R and 80R in Precinct 3. Staff recommends setting the public hearing for this replat for the January 14th, 2025, Commissioners' Court.
January the 14th of 2025. Do I hear a motion?
As I move that we set the public hearing for the replat of Decord Over Hills Phase 2 lots 78R and 80R for January the 14th of 2025.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Wilson to set the public hearing for January 14th, 2025 for the replat of Decord Over Hills Phase 2 lots 78R and 80R, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries five zero. All right, next, discuss, discussing, consider the final plat of Nix Estate Lot 1 Block 1.
This final plat is in Precinct 1 and is a subdivision of an 8.197 acres portion of a 19.017 acres tract. It's part of the Lewis Boatwatt survey, abstract number 33 in Hood County. The proposed plat will be dedicating 0.029 of an acre for right-of-way along Wildcat Knob Road. The proposed plat lies partially in the road corridor district and partially in the rural district, and will be creating an 8.197 acres lot that will be served by private well and onsite sewage facilities. The proposed lot will be accessing existing Campbell Road. All comments are in address, and staff recommends approval as presented.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the final plat of Nix Estate Lot 1 Block 1.
Motion made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the final plat of the Nix Estate Lot 1 Block 1, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Thank you, Mr. Head. Financial, you're up. Our auditor, Ms. Stephanie Matlog.
Hello again. We're still on old budget, new budget. My office has reviewed all old budget expenditures, $118,549.28, as well as the new budget, $501,932.3, and recommends payment.
Do I hear a motion?
I move that we pay the bills of the old budget in the amount of $118,549.28, out of the new budget, $501,932.3.
Second. Yeah, motion made by Commissioner Wilson to pay the bills of the old budget, $118,549.28, the new budget, $501,932.3, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Next?
Yes, it's the end of the month, so we have reviewed all of the financial reports from all the departments, and do you want to loop in the bank reconciliations as well and do them at the same time, or would you like those separately? We can do them at the same time. We've reviewed all of the financial documents, and we recommend the court accepts them.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to accept all of the monthly reports and the bank reconciliations.
Second. By Commissioner Samuelson to accept the monthly reports and financial reconciliation, seconded by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Thank you, Ms. Matlog. So, at this time, the Commissioners will convene into executive discussion to discuss the road administrator position applications and to discuss the act and annex car park or building, real estate leases. We will reconvene into Commissioners' Court afterwards. 15 minutes to 11, we are reconvening back into Commissioners' Court, having been in an executive session where no action was taken. And as concerning item number 11 and about convening into executive session to discuss the road administrator position applications pursuant to 55.1, 5551.074, do I hear a motion?
Judge, I'll make a motion to request that the Personnel Department close the posting and conduct interviews on December 4th in the afternoon.
1:00 P.M., beginning at 1:00 P.M., okay? Seconded by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimous. Okay, and item number 18, convening to executive session to discuss act and annex car park or building, real estate leases pursuant to government code 551.072. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to accept a lease as amended.
As amended.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Andrews to accept the lease as amended, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. All right, and with that, we are adjourned.